Welcome to the February 28, 2022 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if we could start with a moment of silence for the people of the Ukraine?
Lord, please allow us the strength, courage, wisdom, and judgment to do the people's business this evening, and please allow us to respect the thoughts of those around the table and the citizens of Sandusky that may want to share their views. In God's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Byers, will you call a roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
President.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinter?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Commissioners, welcome back. It is good to see all of you at the table, and it's even good to see Mr. Meinter at a table of his own somewhere else. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting on February 15, 2022. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I'm with you to accept the minutes of the February 14 meeting and dispense for the formal reading.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Are there any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda? Please step to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us your thoughts on our agenda items. Seeing no one rushed to the podium, I presume there are no comments on the agenda tonight from residents. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff regarding various pieces of legislation. May I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Byers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. A, water distribution system model and report, second reading. B, new liquor permit for Sandusky Food Hall Bar. C, expend funds to OGO, Karen Share, and Victory Kitchen. D, submerged lands lease payment to ODNR for Battery Park. E, yard waste collection 2022 extension. F, wastewater treatment plant sludge hauling for calendar year 2022. G, refuge and recycling contract.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions and liquor permit, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of all of the items on the consent agenda, A through G, and particularly items C through E pursuant, taking effect immediately pursuant to Section 14 of our city's charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Byers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances, resolutions, and liquor permit hearing are passed. We'll now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Byers, will you present item number one on our regular agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It's requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed East Side and West Side Interceptors Cleaning Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, do you share with us, you know it's been a long time between cleanings, can you share with us what we're going to gain with this?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So this project was something that we had originally scheduled in the capital plan for 2024, 2025 timeframe, but last year we did a flooding analysis in the First through Fifth Street area, and I have a brief presentation. We finally got the results back of that analysis, and that's what's leading to us pushing this project up about three years. So very quickly, I only have a few slides here, I won't be too long, so just bear with me for a couple seconds. So what we looked at were five main options, five main things that the consultant was evaluating, the first one being the rainfall for the two days in that, in 2021, the elevated bay levels, the capacities of the surrounding sewer system, specifically the ones along those roads and the sewers that were, that those discharge into, and the combined sewer overflow, and then they gave us some recommendations and a brief summary. So the two rain events that we really struggled with back in 2021 that caused a lot of basement flooding was in July 16th and July 25th of 2021, and we wanted to compare those as best we could to other similar events when we also had elevated bay levels, so that was limiting us to like 2019, 2020 timeframe and early 21. So what we found, and we hired a consultant to do this, we wanted a third party, we wanted somebody that was going to be independent, and we didn't want to influence the design or the evaluation, so what we found, you can see highlighted there in that first column, is that that September 7, 2020 event had less than an inch of rainfall in an hour, and the July 16th and 25th events exceeded those, and that was really what kind of pushed those conclusions and recommendations from the evaluation that they did. Now, they updated our sewer model, ran those events through the model, and it really reflected what was shown out there in the field, so what they really, the main result that they came up with was that, the main conclusion was really that we had a really short duration of high intense rain, and that was the thing that was the main culprit for causing those problems in those neighborhoods. Here are a few snippets from the report, I just added some of the key takeaways in the various sections. Under the elevated level of the bay, it really concluded that the outfall was nearly submerged. We had about half capacity in our overflow, and that would also contribute to those basement flooding episodes that we had. We have, under the pipe capacity deficiencies, our sewers were not designed to take high intense, short duration rain events like the ones we had on those days. We just couldn't handle it, the sewer system just couldn't handle the I and I and everything else that was happening during those events. And one problem that we did notice under that Arthur Street combined sewer overflow was that the flap gate was partially stuck, partially closed, so it was about 25% closed, so we had about 75% capacity. That's at the same location where we have our overflow, so if that overflow is 50% capacity and then the flap gate is 25% down, we really have problems. And usually what the problem is, is that there's a stick that's stuck in there, so there's not really anything that we can do about it unless we notice it at the time. So we do our regular inspections, that those sticks are washed out periodically, so what the conclusions, what really came away from this was, like I said earlier, that the high intense, short duration rain event was the problem, that there were a couple speculative items that they did throw in there as well, that maybe the capacity within the interceptor, the overflows, those types of things, the elevated bay and that flap gate. Now, we really focused on the First through Fifth Street area, but the same conclusions, this exact same analysis, really applies to the city as a whole. A lot of the problems that we had, the phone calls that we had at that time, many of them we could, we could look at as isolated situations, specific houses, specific sewers, different things like that, some people were complaining with water coming through the walls, that's not really sewer system related. So what, what we felt, and what our consultant felt, was that this evaluation was really applicable citywide for all those events, that the sewer systems in certain areas just weren't designed to take those, those high intense rain events. So the three recommendations at the bottom there, the cleaning of the interceptor, which is the legislation that we are pushing up to get approval for right now, and inspections and maintenance of those flap gates throughout the system, we do that, we're continuing to do that, and we will continue to do that in the future. That last item that's not checked off is the flap gate, the check valve between Arthur Street. What that is, is that Arthur Street is on the east side of the school, Ontario School, it's a paper street, and we have a couple sewers that run up through there, combined sewer and a storm sewer, and what they're saying is, is that it would probably be a good idea just to make sure that that flow from the combined sewer, or from the storm sewer, doesn't back up into the combined sewer and cause backups downstream. So we are going to proceed with doing that, we can do that one in-house by buying the parts and just doing the work with our maintenance crews. So that's all I have for this item on the agenda, and we're hoping that the cleaning of the interceptor will provide additional capacity throughout the system, and we are doing the East Side Interceptor and the West Side Interceptor, which we did not do 11 years ago previously, we only did the East Side Interceptor, so we want to make sure we're taking everything into consideration with this project.
Questions or comments for Mr. Klein, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Mr. Klein, just so that we're all clear, outfall refers to the pipe that takes the water out into the bay, and you've indicated that we had a flap gate, but I want to make sure the public isn't confused, there's no scandal going on here, it's just, this is the flap that acts as the gate. That was meant to interject some humor into this, Mr. Klein, it's okay not to be an engineer for a second. So, but what I want to understand is, when it comes to these flap gates, they get stuck. We use telemetry throughout the city for a lot of different things, are we able to use that for that and sense remotely whether the gate is stuck?
So, we're trying to get away from the telemetry and trying to get, and Stu can probably speak a little bit better to what we're doing out there, but it doesn't necessarily say whether exactly that gate is open or closed, we have to do those visual inspections on the specific flap gate itself. You know, we are upgrading everything that we can possibly upgrade, we do have, with Stu, we have a lot more remote capabilities than we used to have, and we're still continuing to upgrade those as we go through the system, but at that exact location, we don't have that capability to tell us if it's wide open or closed, so we do have to do.
So, may I follow?
Sure.
So, I'm sure there are some people listening who are saying to themselves, well, if we don't have this kind of capacity in our storm sewer system, why don't we build that in? I suspect that the answer would be, number one, it's usually expensive, and two, that these are questions that are probably coming up, and you would know this through your engineering groups, these are questions that are probably coming up around the country, because we talk about climate change as though it's something foreign, and something happening to somebody, you know, out west that's experienced a wildfire, but am I right, Mr. Klein, that these kinds of events, these intense rainfall events, are coming up across the country, and it's wreaking havoc in other systems as well?
Yes, through the President, that's absolutely true. You know, the weather patterns have dramatically shifted, I was actually looking at some stuff a couple years ago that shows reasons that we were, I don't know if it's true or not, but it was showing reasons why the Arctic vortexes were coming down more into Ohio than they did previously, and just because of those shifting weather patterns, heavier rain events, longer periods of dry weather in between, those things, these high intensity, short duration rain events can really wreak havoc on a system, and I'll tell you, I think the biggest problem that most communities, especially communities like the city of Sandusky that have some older, areas of older infrastructure, is really that I and I, that groundwater, that infiltration through the pipe joints, and that's why we're trying to move forward as fast as we can with sewer lining, sewer replacements, those types of things, but a large portion of that I and I really comes from the private laterals from the residents, and that's a very, very tough situation, because sometimes it could be $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 a house to fix that solution, so, you know, those things are not things that are easily rectified. I was told that this has been something that we've been trying to get under, trying to reduce while, you know, over the past 20 years, it's just something that's really tough.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, fair to say that much like you don't build a church for the capacity that you're going to have at Sunday Mass, you don't build a sewer system for 100-year rainfall. The dilemma, of course, as Mr. Murray pointed out, that we're seeing is we're having 100-year rainfall every year or so now, so at some point, we're going to have to, we're going to have to increase capacity if we continue to have that kind of event more than, more often than we have now. I do understand that it's a, it is accumulation of several things, the bay being high, flap being stuck open, partially stuck open, and more than an inch of rain an hour, but good presentation, and I, and I think, I think it was a good move hiring these people to do this, and I know your instructions to these people before they started were very specifically that we were not going to put our finger on the scale and lead them in any direction, we certainly did not do that, I know your office did not do that, although this may not be the answer that several of our residents that got water in their basement want to hear, I think, I believe that it's an accurate one, and we've spent money to make this determination.
Yeah.
Thanks for your presentation. Any additional questions or comments?
Chairman.
What about retention ponds? I know behind Ontario Street, the new school, they have a vast retention pond for storm water runoff, is that something we could look at throughout the community? I even brought that up years ago, when Venice Road flooded a lot, a lot of the buildings and homes out that area were flooded.
Through the President, this is something that, you know, with that green infrastructure plan that we have, I'd love to see more things like that implemented throughout the city, whether it's a public-private partnership, we can do it with the schools like we did down at the intermediate school, or just doing it in public rights of way, or private, or public properties, those types of things. I'd love to see those types of things that reduce the amount of water getting into the system, rather than having to spend millions of dollars expanding the wastewater plant.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow.
Sir.
I would like to go that direction or look into it, because as we sit here, we've got old infrastructure, the pipes eight inches, 12 inches, they can only take so much volume, correct? So much volume, so much storm water, if we're getting more and more storms, why don't we have some, look ahead down the road, on the end of your hood, hey, we could put one here, put one there, like First Street, I love going by there and seeing us pumping, two guys, city workers down there pumping water out, you know, the street there, there might be an area somewhere in that, you know, spot, just an idea.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
How many flap gates are there in the system, roughly?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Ballpark?
20, 25, 30.
Okay.
Different flap gates, maybe 20.
Okay, in terms of, the one that we had to stick in, are they, they all operate the same way, it's all the same concept, they all the same prop, do we have much, do we have an area that has more problems than others?
Through the President, not necessarily. My guess in this one was that it was probably something that came from the bay back up and wedged itself in there, because the water should have been pushing out, but it might have wedged itself up in there before the rain even happened.
Okay, we do have something in place that will be able to avoid that in the future, like you said, there's, you've changed the checking systems that we're checking more often. Great, thank you.
Ms. Byers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Yes.
Pass. Ms. Byers, will you present item number two, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for billing services with Medicaid Billing Solutions Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, for services related to the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask, Mr. Holiday, how does this work, this Medicaid billing system, and if you're on Medicaid, then you're eligible to ride the transit and bill back?
Through the President, Mr. Pajali, our transit administrator, James Stacy, is here, and if you'd like, I'd suggest he come up to the podium and answer that question for you.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I have presented here a few bullet points, if there's any questions after, specifically I'll address them then, but Medicaid Billing Solutions provides services that bill and collect for our special needs ridership. We have been in collaboration with them since 2017. The price increase here is just a minimum mandatory of $150 per month, the 3% has remained In the calendar year of 2019, they were responsible for 9,435 transactions, specifically post-pandemic, in 2021, they were responsible for 2,292 special interest ridership. Prior to presenting this to you, I did consult our finance department, which they did recommend for approval on this, and each trip is billed at $19.31 comparative to our dial-ride service, which is billed at $5.
And, Mr. Stacy, this is specific to people that have Medicaid and have a disability?
Yes, sir.
So it's specific to people, not just some, anyone that has Medicaid? That's Mr. Pajali's question.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, I didn't realize that people that were on Medicaid may just be.
Specific for developmental disabilities, it's billed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Sounds like it's a lot of, a lot of paperwork, to me, what sounds like an incrementally small amount of money.
Comparatively speaking, for the training and compliance for our own finance department, the fees, the services far outweigh the fees.
I agree. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Byers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Ms. Byers, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It's required, requested an ordinance be passed declaring a 1999 Toro 580 mower as unnecessary and unfit for the city use pursuant to Section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a new Toro Groundmaster 5910 rotary mower from Century Equipment of Toledo, Ohio, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the grounds Maintenance Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just wondering, is, what is this, is this an improvement on what we have, or we're going to cut greens, the golf course is going to look better, is this, are we moving up?
Mr. Poole, were you shocked, were you shocked by the amount of money that that Toro lawnmower was? I thought it was a misprint.
No, yeah, I wasn't shocked, I just want to know what it does besides cut grass.
Mr. Klein, you better have an excuse for this.
It's okay, it's okay, but I just wanted to justify what we're buying.
I would say I was pretty surprised, but I saw the price come in too, and that was a price from the state contractor, from the cooperative purchasing, so that's a negotiated price. Yeah, this is a piece of equipment, this is the big mower that we have, that is a 16-foot deck on that mower, so our normal mowers are five feet, so we get three passes with this thing, it mows all of our large parks, Lyons, Amvet, Sprouse, Shoreline, the bigger parks, Doran, those types of things, so it's not the one we use at the golf course, but it's the one that we use for those big passes back and forth through the large parks. Yeah, that's, I mean, it does the bulk of our big mowing, now we, the one that we have is, it's the one that broke down last year, we had trouble getting apart for it, finally got it apart, fixed it, and then we're really scared that it's not going to make it through the year, so we need to get something as fast as we can.
Okay, so it's not, it's replacing what we already have, it's just going to do the same thing, okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Klein, did I see that in this, this 1999 mower was about a little over $60,000, or am I thinking of something else? I was just going to note that, what, in 12 years, it's...
12, 20 years.
I think that's 20 plus.
Yeah, 20 plus years, it's doubled.
Yeah, I threw to check, through the President, I don't know the original price of the last one that we bought. I'd have to ask for that one, I can get back to that.
Okay, I guess it's just a sign of the times.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Byers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Byers, will you present item number four, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Moser Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for the wastewater treatment plant emergency backup generator repair project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed? This is a point where someone makes a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
We need somebody out of the bullpen, pick somebody.
Mr. [inaudible].
Yeah, I was going to say, I just.
I was just going to ask Mr. Klein to give us a little Reader's Digest view of what we're doing here, and assure us that we are not vulnerable, because it sounds like we got a generator down.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, this is the project that we came to at the end of last year, the generator failed, this operates our UV system at the wastewater treatment plant, is the main focus of it, but it also handles the two effluent pumps and a control panel and a process gate. That UV system is out of service, we turn it off through the winter because the water quality is better during that time, it's supposed to be back up and operational around middle of May, so we're really pushing here to get something back in service. We did a very detailed evaluation last year on purchasing a brand-new piece of equipment, and the timeline on that was just crazy these days, it was, generator manufacturers won't even give you a date anymore when you ask them when you want to make a purchase, because they're way over a year out, so the best option that we have to try to meet our deadline of getting it back in service is to have the current generator taken off-site by the contractor. is to have the current generator taken off-site by the contractor, taken to a repair facility. They're going to analyze it, break it down, look at all the parts and pieces to it, see what we need, rebuild it, bring it back, hook it back up. And what we also factored into this was, last year, we really struggled with getting a temporary generator in to replace the temporary generator. So we worked into this contract to have the contractor has to supply that if they can't meet that deadline. Now, the good thing that I would say is that we have Moser, and they have been amazing to work with in the past, so I trust them. I know that they're going to move as quickly as they possibly can to get things, but with the shipping problems that we're having, we're hoping we can get this fixed as quickly as possible to reduce those temporary costs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Klein, it occurs to me that, given the difficulty of getting a replacement generator in any recent period of time, I'm just curious, does the city own portable temporary generators that we can take around from spot to spot in case we need them?
Through the President, we, we have several generators that we take to the list stations. We have smaller ones that can be used at various locations, but we don't have anything of this capacity, so we have to rent when we get this big.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Are they readily available for rent? And if we needed to, if we wanted to purchase one, how much are we talking about?
Through the President, so renting one last year was $15,000. The problem we ran into at the end of last year was that was right when the hurricane hit, so all the generators would be taken, were taken down south. So they're more readily available than they were last year, and knowing that Moser has an electrical contractor onboard, they have a lot more connections, and we should be able to get something in. They'll know what the timing is, and they can plan ahead and make sure that it works. To buy a new generator, it was, let's see, this was a $485,000, I think they were talking almost $1 million to get something of this size, and it was over a year to get it, so we were looking at sometime next summer getting something. So we would also have to pay that $15,000 rental fee a month for seven to eight months this summer, and possibly the beginning of next year as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm sorry, to clarify, I was just asking if it's prudent to purchase a large standby generator so that we have it when it's available, given the supply chain disruption. I just, that's, that's an area within your wheelhouse, you've probably thought about it, but I just want to make sure it crossed your mind.
Yeah, through the President, I did not look into actually buying a large temporary version that we could haul around. Something that IT Director Hamilton and I were talking about last week was trying to do something that probably should have been done a long time ago, which is interconnect all the generators that are at the wastewater plant, so if this one goes down, you might be able to tie into another one and transfer over to that one. So that's something that we don't currently have. It makes a lot of sense to do, and I don't know why it hasn't been done, so it's something that we'll, we'll start looking into seeing how we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
We're going to have a 20-some-year-old generator that we've put in 40% of the price of a new generator into. How much, how long is it going to survive? What can we expect?
Yes, through the President, I think we, I can't remember exactly what the warranty was. I think we had a five-year warranty on this one, and the regular generator, new one had a 10-year warranty, so we definitely weighed the warranty on these. I can look at that.
You know what the warranty was on the old, on the one we have now, since we've had it since 98? But what was, do you have any idea what that was?
I don't know what the original warranty was.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to all this major equipment, it appears, I would at least like to explore the difference between a million dollars for a brand-new generator versus $485,000 to fix a 25-year-old generator. The only, you could, we could argue or discuss whether or not we think it's worth it, which I'd like to have that discussion, but further, the only thing keeping us from it is just a matter of identifying equipment that's old and needs to go down and order earlier. We could have ordered this generator, and at $15,000 a month, that's 32 months before you get to $485,000. It's a long time, so I appreciate if you just, that we have some conversation about what is actually a prudent use of our money. I'm not certain this is it. We're stuck now because we didn't identify our shortcomings early enough to take actual action, but I'm not comfortable spending this kind of money on something this old. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, specifically Resolution Number One, item number five.
It is requested a resolution be passed approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects and affidavit under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 1710, and declaring the necessity of acquiring, constructing, installing, equipping, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Sandusky, Ohio in cooperation with the City of Sandusky, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring it an emergency. 333 East Washington Street Project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this resolution, 51, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, we've only had, I think, one other of these pieces of legislation before us, and it's been a little while ago, I believe, so perhaps you can give us a refresher course on what we're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is correct. This would be our second PACE-financed project. PACE Financing is a program that's allowable in the state of Ohio. It stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy Financing. That program allows the owner of a property located in a energy special improvement district to petition the district and their local government to place a special assessment on their property. That special assessment is then paid when the property owner pays their property taxes twice a year. That payment is forwarded to the local government, and then the local government forwards it on to the lender that provided the upfront lending for the renovation project. In this case, name one Yellowstone LLC, as the Commission is aware, is renovating the building at 333 Washington. They're converting the building into a nine-unit transient rental, and they would like to take advantage of PACE Financing. PACE Financing is attractive to lenders for a number of reasons. It provides a certain amount of certainty to the lender. The assessment carries from one property owner to the next as the, in the event that the property is sold. There's also, also some advantages to the lender in terms of priority of their lien, essentially, and their ability to ensure that they're repaid. From the city's standpoint, our role is essentially just to accept any special assessment payments that are made from the county, and then to forward those on to the lender. So that's what we're doing in the first PACE financing project that's currently in place, and that's what we'll be responsible for in this case. In conclusion, PACE Financing is a great program that can really support projects that are making energy efficiency improvements, and hopefully this will be one of many more to come through the city. Lastly, I'll point out that the Sandusky Energy Special Improvement District did review this project, and they recommended it for approval at its meeting on February 2 of this year. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Waddington, who joins me representing the city on that board, and I would recommend your approval of the resolution and the following two ordinances this evening.
Comments or questions for Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Chairman, if they qualify for this program, then the money comes at a reduced rate from the lender to them, is that the carrot?
Correct. The lender is typically able to offer the loan at a, at an attractive interest rate because they have a higher level of certainty through this PACE financing that they'll be repaid.
And if the project were to go belly up, are we, are we out of it as far as the lender coming back on us for any of that assessment?
Mr. President, to the, to Mr. Pajali, no, we're not, and I would also invite Law Director Hile to add anything to that response, as he's been helping me to review this proposal. Mr. Holliday is correct. The way the financing works is it stays with the property, so they would be trying to collect from any subsequent property owner if, for some reason, this property isn't completed, it gets sold, the assessment stays on the property.
But if the property never gets finished, if, let's say nobody comes in and buys that project, or comes in and takes over, then are we liable for those payments?
No.
Okay.
That, you would only, I appreciate Mr. Hile's comment on that, and I know exactly, because the only way that we would know that is if you read the 47 pages that were attached to that in his per reading there somewhere. I'm sure Mr. Waddington knows where it's at, because there is a phrase in there that says very specifically, the sponsor, which is the city, is not liable in the event of any failure. Boy, is it hard to find. Mr. Waddington found that at 4:15 in the morning.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to 2018. Thanks, Dennis, when you put me on this committee. So it'd just be a half hour. Well, I've got about six hours of reading here, and then the meetings were, I don't know what you, what the hell I get in.
We could all ask that question.
I'll leave it at that.
I might, I might add, for what is a very simple concept, it will seem like there's a lot of regulatory burden, which is true. It is administratively something that we obviously have to go through many steps for, but the concept is really simple. It's, it's something like assessing your own HOA fee on yourself, and that you then pay off a loan with.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Resolution Number One of that legislation is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two of the ordinance, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed to proceed with the acquisition, installation, equipping, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Sandusky, Ohio in cooperation with the City of Sandusky, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring it an emergency. 333 East Washington Street Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move to approve this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the Commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three of this piece of legislation.
Yes. It is requested an ordinance be passed levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, installing, equipping, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Sandusky, Ohio in cooperation with the City of Sandusky, Ohio Special Improvement District, and approving special documents, and declaring it an emergency. 333 East Washington Street Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed? Mr. Pajali.
Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the Commission on this motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Resident. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase five Morning Pride Trails turnout gear fire coat and pants sets through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated of Southbury, Connecticut for use in the fire department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I just had a question for Chief D'Amico. Boy, I really like hearing that, Chief D'Amico. I think this is the first time you've been with us, if I remember, in person since you were named chief, so delightful to see you up there at the front table. The question I have is, I love a good suit as much as anybody else, and I love to see our firefighters well-protected, well-equipped, and well-suited. Just I wonder if you could give us some insights in terms of why these suits are almost $3,800? They must be, must be very specially made.
Well, they have a specific flame retardant rating that if they come and contact the flame, they don't suffer as much damage. They have specific areas that have like extra padding, extra cut protection. They have a thermal layer inside that protects the wear from the heat that transfers through the coat. These particular gear, Morning Pride, we've been using for quite a while, so they're pretty good quality, and they actually have a 10-year life.
Okay, that's what I remember. They, they last a long time, and then I think they go into a backup mode after that, if I remember, and I think that I voted on these, I don't know, 15 times over the years, so I know we keep buying these, so they must be, must be a good product.
Yeah, we try to replace them every five years, so they have an A set and a B set, per se. These particular five sets are for the five new guys that we expect to hire throughout this year, two of which start next week.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Chief, we, we take, we take the old ones out of service, don't we? We don't just give them to, give them to somebody, another department, do we? Are they disposed of?
Usually after like eight to ten years, if we're not using them anymore, a lot of times, if they're still in good shape, they're not torn up or anything, we usually put together a group and we donate them to E. Hovey Career Center, and they use them in their fire training program.
Training, yeah.
Because they can use them without exposing them to fire conditions, and you know, the students can get used to wearing them and.
Great move.
Things like that, yes.
So they have, they have a life after, after their original life.
Yeah, a few years after that, yes.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call the rule on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, the City of Sandusky Recreation Department would like to thank Brett Charville for his generous donation of five thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-two continuation of the Midtown Supper Club program. The donation will be used for staffing and supplies of the award-winning program, which will kick off in April of this year. I'd ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
Moving on to finance. Due to Emancipation Day, the municipal income tax filing deadline for twenty-twenty-one income tax return is April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. All individuals and businesses can utilize the Regional Income Tax Agency or Rita's website at www.ritaohio.com to file their taxes. For public works, the Greenhouse is now accepting Palm and Fern reservations for Palm Sunday and Easter Sunday. Orders can be placed by calling four-one-nine-six-two-seven-five-eight-two-nine. And then a few recreation updates, the first of which is that we'd like to ask for a motion for approval for Sandusky Rec. to apply for the Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation for grant funds not to exceed ten thousand for funds used to bring back Safety Town in collaboration with the city's police and fire departments this summer. Funds will be used to construct the town's streetscape and pay for materials with the grant deadline of March fourth. First, I'd ask for a motion to accept, that are up to allow for that application.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
And then finally, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval for Sandusky Rec. to apply for bicycle helmets through the twenty-twenty-two Put a Lid on It Bike Helmet Safety Awareness Campaign for up to two hundred helmets. The helmets will be used for events in collaboration with the police departments in Sandusky Bay Cycles in twenty-twenty-two with the grant deadline of March fourth. I'd ask for a motion so they can make that application.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved also.
Great. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any comments or answer questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, comments or questions for city manager? Well, that's a first. We'll move to items of old business, Commissioners. Have items, any items of old business? No items of old business, we'll move to items of new business. Are there any items of new business?
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I need to ask, I'll vote on three different executive sessions. The first is, I'd like to make a motion for an executive session on the purchase and sale of real estate.
May I have a second to that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That executive session is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Second motion to set an executive session on litigation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That executive session is set.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm sure you were convinced that I was going to forget. Second motion for purchase and sale of real estate, but I'm going to make a motion for an executive session on that as well.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Nope, you all brought your toothbrushes tonight. I have some housekeeping items under new business. I would ask for a motion for, actually, I need a motion for three public hearings. We'll do them one at a time. I need a motion for a public hearing for CDBG two thousand and twenty substantial amendment for our meeting on March the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That public hearing is set. I would request a motion for a public hearing for CDBG two thousand and twenty-two Action Plan for the March fourteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That public hearing is set, and I will request one additional public hearing, a motion for additional public hearing for rezoning of six-twenty-nine East Adams Street for April the eleventh meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That public hearing is set. Additionally, I need to make some appointments, and I need motions to approve those appointments. The first appointment is Mr. Michael Zuloff to CRA Housing Council. I will need a motion to appoint Mr. Zuloff to that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That appointment is set. Additionally, I need a motion to appoint former Commissioner Twine to the Audit Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That appointment is set. I would ask for a motion to appoint Nick Alexikos to Erie Regional Planning Committee.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on Mr. Alexikos's appointment?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That appointment is set. I would ask for a motion to appoint Mr. David Miller to the Erie Regional Planning Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on Mr. Miller's appointment?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That appointment is set, and Mr. Meinter, that's what you get for not showing up.
Thank you.
Any additional items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just a quick announcement, if you would. The Minority Business Empowerment Team last Friday hosted a very special event in lieu of Black History Month. Just wanted to recognize some individuals that had made and are making history in our community through business and community outreach. After hundreds of nominations, these three individuals were selected by the committee as recipients of the twenty-twenty-two Black Business Pioneer Award. We had Bridget Burrell of Lena Browsen Beauty, yeah, Beauty Bar, there's a lot of Bs in there, Johnny Reed from CR Exchange, and Phil Parker Senior from Phil P.'s Unisex Salon. I would just like to thank all of our sponsors, as well as fellow commissioners and city staff for attending that event. It was certainly a great one, and we actually had the event at venue six-three-four, which is, gosh, the way that turned out is spectacular, so, so yes, thanks again.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
It was a very fine event, and our own Commissioner Harris was kind of a co-EMC, I would say. He really has a future as a preacher, I think.
No, 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 no. That's a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure.
Started years ago, started years ago. Additional items of, additional items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I also attended that event, and it was very well done. Commissioner Harris did a nice job, and I also wanted to note that the reuse of that building, the old Brussels Flower Shop, venue six-three-four, it's a really nice location, and I wish her well on that venture.
Any public comments on any items that pertain to city business? Any public would like to comment on any items, please step to the microphone. Again, there's no rush to the podium. I presume there's none here. We will retire to executive session for our first, we'll clear the room first, and then we'll move to executive session.
We're going upstairs.
Turn it, you tell me when we're turning on.
I haven't even eaten all day, all day.
Yeah.